Meeting to order, please. Gigi, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Father God in heaven, we come to you today in the light and name of Jesus, and we want to thank you for everything that you're doing here in the city, God. We thank you for allowing us to find Gigi, God, for the position of city manager, Lord. We ask that you will anoint her, Father God, and that you will give her the ability, Lord, to see the things that need to be seen, Lord, so to prosper the city and to make it move forward, God. Lord, and for the council, Lord, give us wisdom and insight, Lord. Help us in all the decisions we make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Nita, roll call.
Counselor Foster?
Present.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Motion carries and a pardon is declared.
Any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there will be one modification to the agenda. We would like to remove F1 this evening.
I would move to approve the modifications to the agenda. Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to remove F1 on the modification of agenda.
Approval of consent agenda minutes regular meeting of October 21st, 2021. Review and approval of accounts payable.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Been moved in second to approve the consent agenda for the minutes regular meeting of October 21st, 2021, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Citizen comments and special presentations, scheduled appearances, you have to be, to be included in this portion of the agenda. You have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk in the later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Reyna?
Do I need to sign this since I'm on the agenda?
Please.
So as a prelude, I have a list of documents that I've handed out that I'll be referring to because I'd never got to a presentation on the wall. So here it is. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and guests. My name is Reyna Balcher, and over the last few weeks, as has come to my attention, there are some folks who wonder why I'm so upset over the pending sale of the Guzlo building. The actual phrase is not one I'm willing to repeat because of the actual language used, but let me address the personal reason first. When any of us goes to work each day, we do it so we can provide our family a comfortable way of life, maybe a vacation once in a while. We also go to work each day for 30 to 40 years in the hopes we'll have a comfortable retirement, hopefully avoiding that small 15 by 15 nursing home room where we would undoubtedly have to share with someone we don't know or don't care for, listening to a blaring TV program we aren't interested in, knowing the only peace and quiet we'll ever have is when we're in our bed at night, hopefully. We hope to make good decisions along the way, which will help us avoid that. Very few of us in this room will ever be wealthy, but we tried to plan carefully so we've taken care of during our last years. As a self-employed company, Jim and I, a couple, we have been self-employed for 32 years and at our current location for over 30 years. Several years ago, we began our search for a building in which to really relocate our business, focused on First Avenue because we felt the exposure would be better. We submitted a proposal on the facet building after it was remodeled after the fire. The folks who made the decision on the facet building did not choose our plan. In addition to our current business, we had planned to have two other businesses, one of which was an upscale antique mall, which was all the rage on the front range at the time. It was quite lucrative. One compliment from an influential person involved in the decision was, "We don't need another junk store in this town." His response to us living upstairs was, "And you can't raise those girls up there." Instead, they sold it to a gentleman from outside the valley, and it sat empty for about 75% of the time he owned it over the next 14 years. I suspect it was purchased for nothing more than a tax write-off, whether it was rented or it was empty. We looked at other buildings. Occasionally, on a few occasions, after the police department moved to its current location, I casually inquired about the Guzlo building because of its location. Anyone who understands real estate knows our business would be worth more when we sell it at return and at that location than in our current location. It's not about greed, folks. It's not about winning over someone else. As I stated earlier, it's about preparing for a safe, comfortable retirement, hopefully one that makes us as independent as possible so we aren't a burden to our loved ones. The second reason I am upset over the pending sale of the Guzlo building is a legal issue. We did not get an opportunity to make an offer on it, nor did Fennell and Debbie Garcia, and neither did anyone else who might have been interested in it. Fennell and I have spoken more than once about the fact that the city was obligated to issue an RFP on the building. When we spoke, the initial lease was being presented, oh, we spoke when the initial lease was being presented. We spoke when the lease was extended for an additional two years and on other occasions. Every time, we have been given the time to speak and then ignored as you signed every document, giving Mr. Douglas what he wanted. If the building had been made available by competitive bids, it is highly likely the new owner would have taken a couple of years to fix up the building and would have been in the building for about a year and a half by now. Instead, look where we are in the process. The process over the last three years and eight months has been legally wrong, and I will prove why by showing documentation from the city charter, the city municipal code, and the city personnel regulation and rules manual. It has not been easy to find some of the information because not all of it is available online, so I've had to file numerous public records requests. In the interest of transparency, I would suggest you look into this sooner rather than later and make sure it is all available in its entirety online. Not only is it time-consuming to file these requests, but it is time-consuming for your city clerk. So let's go back to the beginning of when, does this thing have a break on it? There's something that keeps moving. I'm sorry. So let's go back to the beginning with when Jim and I got involved in this, three years and eight months ago, in late February or early March of 2018. I asked the former city manager what the city's plans were for the Guzlo building, whether it would be for sale at some point in the future because we were interested in possibly relocating our business to that location. I also asked for a copy of an architectural study that had been done on the building a few years previous to that. At that time, I thought it was a study done by architect Mark Jones. It may still exist, but I've never found it. What I did find in recent weeks is a historic structure assessment, a project that was paid for by state historical fund grant from History Colorado, the Colorado Historical Society. I finally found a copy from an independent source in recent months. The former city manager told me I wasn't the first person to ask about it. He said he would try to find it and get back to me. In March, Ron Douglas was hired as an economic development specialist to bring business to Manavista. And as an aside, I don't believe the way in which he was hired was in accordance with city policies because that position was not advertised. I won't go any further on that subject this evening. The next thing I heard on the subject of the Guzlo building was in May, when I saw on the agenda that Mr. Douglas had been given a lease on the building, as well as a valid publishing building, for an absurdly low price of $500 a year for both of them. The reasoning in leasing the building to Mr. Douglas was stated in Resolution 06-20018, to create the opportunity for additional business space in the community which can be managed to create potential business incubators. It's pretty clear to most folks that Mr. Douglas did nothing with that building that benefited the city, but instead subleased the Guzlo building and put the rent money in his own pocket. Leasing the building to Mr. Douglas in the manner in which it was done is in direct violation of two city documents. You'll see them, Municipal Code 2-8-50, sale of city property. And it is the one that we've been shown many, many times. It talks about any sale of real estate occurs only after a public hearing in accordance with the requirement of city charter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What has never been mentioned is paragraph B, which states, "Sale of personal property shall be governed by provisions of the city's bidding and purchasing policy attached as Appendix 3A to this chapter." You can't find it, but I finally did. On January 19th, 2017, and I think Jason Lorenz, oh, Counselor Lorenz was in there, Ordinance 876 was removed from the city's bidding and purchasing policy along with other appendices from the Code of Ordinances and moved it to an appendix, stating that removing policies from the code will protect the accuracy of both the policies and code and will save on codification costs. Ordinance 876 further stated, "The policies will remain in effect until superseded by subsequent administrative action or resolution." As I said, it took a public records request to find the bidding and purchase policy because it was not accessible on the website. It states, "All sales of obsolete or unusable property with an estimated value in excess of $2,500 shall be sold through the formal bid process to the highest responsible bidder after due notice inviting bids. The city may engage auctions to firms to sell obsolete or unusable property after soliciting the auction firms through the formal bid process or through cooperative purchasing. The city may reject all bids when it is in the best interest of the city to do so, and any sale of real estate shall occur only after a public hearing in accordance with the requirements of Section 4420 of the Municipal Code." I then found articles which address conflict of interest and fairness in bidding. Section 21220 says, "No official or employee having the power or duty to perform an official act or action related to a transaction which is or may be the subject of an official action of the city shall, (1) have a financial interest in such transaction, or (2) have a financial interest in any business representing, advising, affiliating with or appearing on behalf of, whether paid or unpaid, any individual or business involved in such transaction." What I'm getting at here is that because Mr. Douglas had been hired as a contractor of the city and this thing was given to him, not only did we violate the public bidding policy, but he had an interest in this in a backdoor deal. Municipal Code, Section 21270, equality of treatment, says, "No official or employee shall grant any special consideration, treatment, or advantage to any person other than that which is available to any other person." In the personal regulations and rules manual, there is a section which addresses conflicts of interest. I'm not going to read it all. It's big, but you brought it in your packet before. The next thing you might want to look at is the original lease, in which it states, in paragraph 5, "Tennant does not have a right to offer to purchase this property for the term of this lease. However, this may be a consideration about renewal or extension." The next thing I will have you look at is the addendum, which was signed a year later. The term of lease starts September 1 until 3rd, so it's referring to the original lease. I want to point out that paragraph 5 of the initial lease says that they do not. The lease addendum says, "Within the lease, Part 5 indicates that tenant has the option to purchase the properties for their appraised value retroactive to the date of signing the agreement." Based on that correct information, that statement, the lease addendum is incorrect and should be null and void based on the attorney I spoke with. Legal opinion is that would also make everything else that has happened since then null and void. To clarify one more time, the lease addendum in paragraph 3 states that the original lease says that there was an option to purchase, but in the original purchase, it definitely states that there was not. When the lease addendum was brought before the council on March 12, 2019, the minutes from that meeting reflect an extended discussion about the Guzlo building. Then I have those minutes in your packet. The minutes show, I pointed out, there are other people within the community that would like to bid on this building. Under the agenda, items, contracts, agreements, leases, there was lengthy discussion about the leases on the Guzlo and the Valley Publishing Building. That section was included below. I will only address certain items that seem more pertinent than others and are in bold type. Those highlighted areas, bolded areas, are as follows. The Guzlo building was not leased with the option to purchase, and this is Mr. Nuremberg speaking. If it is to be sold, it would have to go to the voters. Because it was once a public building, there are currently about two more years before it could be sold without going to the voters. We come down a little bit further. Counselor Elthorp asked if with all that time, if anybody had ever inquired about the buildings. Mr. Nuremberg stated that he has had a couple of inquiries of purchase, possible purchase of the Guzlo building. That would be myself and Fennell Garcia. My comment on that is that I believe the historical assessment was done about that time because it was also looked at by the Kids Connection. Anita could probably speak to that. I've been told that she was. It was also talked about whether or not URA could take the building. Mr. Nuremberg stated that the URA currently possesses several projects and does not feel that the Valley Publishing would be appropriate. I disagree with Forrest on his opinion. That is exactly the type of situation URA deals with and was formed to deal with. The Guzlo building could be put for sale on the ballot if council chooses not to renew the lease, if that is what they choose. Next highlighted area, Mr. Nuremberg also stated that if he felt like there were not things going on with the buildings, that he would not have brought this to them. This is just another example of Mr. Nuremberg ignoring the fact that he had received two inquiries about buying the building, as evidenced in earlier comments above. More discussion continued with Counselor Lorenz, that would be Kathy Lorenz, stating that she is in favor of the addendum for the Valley Publishing Building, but not the Guzlo building, and that an RFP be put out at the end of the lease to the community. Mr. Douglas stated that the agreement was if they want the Guzlo building back, he has receipts that would need to be reimbursed if the building goes back to the city. Counselor Elthorp stated that she disagreed with Mr. Douglas, that disagrees that he has a right to recoup his expenses. And she was exactly correct because in all of the documentation that I've looked through, there was nothing about that. In fact, the only thing I saw regarding improvements was in the lease addendum, which stated, "If the tenant does not purchase a property at the termination of this lease, all improvements shall become the property of the city of Manavista." Counselor Elthorp continued, and I find this so difficult. Also, the Guzlo building would not be able to be sold, and there has been no inquiries on these buildings and feels that both addendums need to be approved. Counselor Elthorp's comment is incorrect, as evidenced by Mr. Nuremberg's statement earlier in the same minutes, as evidenced by his statement and from the times that Fennell and I stood here at this podium and expressed interest in the building. It's not like either of us are unknown as business owners of the community, nor as that we would not be likely to have the funds to have made it possible to buy the building. Counselor Lorenz asked if there is an option to purchase at the end of the leases. Mr. Nuremberg stated that the Valley Publishing Building, yes, but not the Guzlo building. It would need to go to the voters. And yet, you guys passed the addendum. Counselor Lorenz was the only one on the council who truly understood and cared what was right and what was legal, and yet, no one listened to her. So, why am I upset? Well, if you aren't yet outraged, then you haven't been paying attention. At best, much of what happened appears a little bit shady. Folks have asked me if I thought it was due to incompetence, corruption, or apathy. I truly hope it wasn't any of the three, but it doesn't make any of you look dependable or trustworthy. Well, I'm sorry, but when public hearings continue to be given proper, not to be given proper notice according to your charter regulations, it doesn't add to your credibility. I'm sure it's nothing more than an oversight, but the hearing at your next meeting has been scheduled three times because it was not properly noticed. As I stated earlier, my appearance in front of you over the last three years has not been about greed. It has been about getting an equal opportunity for something that would have made our lives better if we had been the highest bidder in a competitive bid. But we never got that opportunity, nor did Fennell and Debbie Garcia, nor did anyone else who might have wanted to purchase the building. And that is because you did not allow it. As of tonight, I have no intention of speaking at the public hearing against the sale of the Guzlo building next week, next meeting, to Mr. Pacheco, the sale of the Guzlo building to Mr. Pacheco, because I like him, I respect his hard work, and I have no desire to leave him feeling depleted like we did when the city sold the facet building to Mr. Ford instead of us. You were not elected to your positions on this council to be spoon-fed information. You were elected to lead. Instead, you have merely signed off on everything that has been put in front of you in regard to the Guzlo building without any serious questions. You obviously didn't care enough to do any of your own research. That kind of apathy affects people's lives. I've provided you with examples of the many breaches of the city's various governing rules. There may well be more. As a result, you have allowed a legal liability to be created. I've spoken with an attorney to confirm that. I also wanted the legal opinion of my research. However, as of tonight, as I stand at this podium, I have no intention of suing the city. That could change, but it's not likely. What I do have is an expectation that you do better for the remainder of your time on this council. You owe this community better, and frankly, you owe yourselves better. Thank you.
Thank you, Reyna. Thank you for all the research.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for all the research. We'll move on to citizen comments unless somebody has something. Is anybody have anything? We'll move on to citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes, and city council will not take action at the same meeting. No citizen comments? So we'll go to public hearing, first reading of the 2022 budget.
Mayor, I guess we'll start. I think probably logically, we need to have a public hearing, which, I don't know if we'll have folks here that want to make any comments, but so let's open the public hearing on the budget, and then I think after the hearing, any resolutions the finance director might have, might be appropriate at that point. So I think let's call the finance director and kind of have her generally explain our budget and our line items and, you know, total revenues, total expenditures, and see where we're at. And then at least folks, I think she probably has a more detailed budget. But if you would just state your name for the record, and then you could proceed here.
I'm Anita Kinsey, the finance director. We've had a work session about the budget. I sent you detail to review, and tonight, we can go over a summary of it. I can go over the expected revenues and expenditures, if you allow me. We're expecting in the general fund to have, and I'm going to kind of round up these numbers. The general fund, 3.9 million. Conservation Trust is 45,000. Urban Renewal Authority, 105,000. Kids Connection Fund, 237,000. City Service Water Fund, 1,042,000. City Service Sewer Fund, 2,119,000. Capital Improvement Fund, 539,000. Capital Project Fund, 150,000. The One Cent Sales Tax Fund, 614,000. What we're expecting for expenditures in the general fund is 3.9 million. Conservation Trust, 45,000. Urban Renewal, 105,000. Kids Connection, 237,000. City Water Fund, 1,150,000. City Service Sewer Fund, 2,360,000. Capital Improvement Fund, 465,000. Capital Project, 150,000. And the One Cent Sales Tax Fund, 594,000. For the most part, we scheduled the budget as a zero balance budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has been budgeted at a deficit. He has some that you probably noticed when we went over it in the work session. He has, you know, some equipment to buy, and we've got the big sewer project going that he's going to be expending some. He should be okay because of the fund balance that he has accumulated. Have any questions? Did you need me to do anything else, Mike?
I need to just, I mean, you've got total revenues of 8,758. You've got expenditures of 9,140,000. You've got more expenditures than revenue, right?
Right, and that's what I was trying, in the Water and the Sewer Fund, there will be a deficit in those.
And do you know roughly what you're expecting that deficit to be?
The Water Fund is expected to be about 107,000 and a deficit. And the Sewer Fund is about 241,000. But even at that, if you look at what we're expected, the projected fund balance to be at the end of 2022 with that proposed budget, in the Water Fund would still be a 1.4 million fund balance, and the Sewer Fund projected would be 3.2 million fund balance.
I don't know if any of the council members have any questions about finance.
I apologize for not making the work session. I was sick and quarantined. You wouldn't have wanted me if you'd been here. The one that caught my attention was recreation. The one that caught my attention was Recreation. As its budget, Parks and Recreation almost doubles, mainly because of $40,000 going to the golf course. Can you tell me a little bit about that? Or maybe someone else in staff can tell me?
The golf course was budgeted about $10,000 more than what they had expended last year. They were requesting a little bit more so that they could work on a new clubhouse, because the one that they have is not habitable. And so they were hoping that we would be able to increase the amount to them a little bit, and then they can put in other funds for the completion of that project.
Thank you.
Anita, how has the revenues gone? I mean, in the last couple of years? I know that I watch them go by and play an awful lot by my house, and it seems like there's quite a bit of play there. I mean, are the revenues up or down, or?
It seems, you know, just in the few short months I've been here, and the history that I can look at shows that the sales tax is the one that has increased the most. And I know that we've talked about that before. It's about, what was it? About 11% higher than it was last year? It just is like on a, and when you had the audit for 2020, they mentioned in it that the sales tax had increased, and they thought a lot of it had to do with the pandemic and how people were at home and buying things online, and the new laws for internet purchases made people start by paying sales tax on their internet purchases. So, sales tax revenue has gone up.
Our prior Finance Director kind of has had worked with the golf course and really maybe helped them kind of come up to speed. I don't know if anybody's asked for your help or if you're going to be involved in that at all, maybe?
Not, well, if I, I will do what I need to do. But now I'm not much of a golfer. I watch the balls fly in my yard.
We need a good golfer here. But I, I think it would at least be helpful to make sure, if you will, but at least maybe there's some input there because...
I think it would be nice that if we had a report or something, what they are using our money for, and if it did go to what they had asked for.
Didn't we have, didn't we have it set up that some, that at least
Jenny or Forrest?
Two people from the city had to be on the board?
So we have Bob, Bill, and Michael Ross is supposed to be on the board.
So is that golf board we need right now?
So we should, they should be able to get a report for that, and Bob could talk to Anita.
Well, and that's, that's how I know as much as I do about it is because Bob was telling me about the building and how they can't use it for anything.
Correct, and when Jen was, Jennifer was still here, she used to give the golf board updates because she was on the golf board. But we can definitely have Bob here.
Because I remember the goal was to get the golf course self-sustainable and off, kind of, kind of off of our, you know...
Grocery list.
Thank you, I was trying to go with a good word for what, what list. So, I don't understand why we're having to give them more now. Again, I, just something to look into, because I thought that we could do...
Well, part of it is, and part of it is they're trying to build a new building out there because it's...
I've, I've been in it, yeah. And I got out of it really quickly. I was comfortable in there. But, well, that was part of, and I don't have the minutes of the meetings, so I'm trying to do this by memory. We all know how, well, that goes. But I'm pretty sure that the goal was that they were beginning, they were going to be, we were going to help them for another year. They had shown great improvement, and that, that another year was last year. And, you know, they were, they were going to become some, become less dependent on us and be able to come up with that, with a way to fix that building. Now, if they just haven't been able to do that yet, that's fine, but if we're going to get, if we're going to fall back into the trap of the golf courses taking more and more and more instead of less and less, then something needs to be looked at on that one. And I really don't want to have to go through that at circus again.
Oh, that was so much fun. Your recollection is correct, Counselor, that our goal was to try and make the golf course self-sufficient. If I recall correctly, last year, that was for new computer system and a new piece of ground maintenance equipment and some other capital improvements. Henceforth, I was, that's why I was kind of questioning why we had another 40,000 coming at us. It was the same question that you're asking now, and that's why I was bringing it up. If it is for the renovation of a building, I think we can look at that, because if it turned, if it's never a golf course again, then we get to keep the building. You know, so basically, it's the city fixing up a building, but I really would like to see what they intend to spend $40,000 on.
Are there any grants available that they could apply for to get that building fixed? I understand the grant process is, you know, not a birthday party, but it's money.
We're getting kind of off track of the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
But it's very difficult to get those grants on golf courses. I can tell you that.
I'm sorry.
So, but, I, I mean, to justify that, I think it's time to get a report from them for the financial part of it, and then have them come in and give us a report so we can get back on the budget.
Right.
Right. Okay, any other questions? I don't have anything else for our Finance Director. I don't know.
So for the deficit spending that we're doing in Water and Sewer, is that all for capital purchases, or where is that money going?
The, well, okay. A little bit of it is an increase in our general liability insurance, which we don't have a control over that. And that's not Rob's issue. Depreciation, payment in lieu, transfer of funds in the Water Supply Department. Utilities have increased. Professional services, he increased that maybe by about 3,000. Equipment, he increased about four. Not significant increases in each individual line items. Capital outlay, he budgeted 75,000 as opposed to 10,000 last year. Even though he's, he's got a deficit budget, his expenditures are under what was budgeted last year. So, he budgeted a deficit last year, but it's less than what it, this year is less than what it was last year.
And yes, Counselor, a lot of his vehicles, one is the water truck.
On the water side, yeah, you can, you can look at the capital outlays, and that, that covers the deficit. On the sewer side, it doesn't. Capital outlays don't cover the deficits or spending money in operations on the savings.
The capital outlay he has in the Sewage Disposal Department is, you know, 75, 100, 110,000 dollars.
Yeah, 160,000 if you throw in the storm sewer side of it, but it's not a lot. So what's, so what's, is a new sewage plant coming under the infrastructure maintenance? Because that's...
The, I believe the, the planning and the design is happening next year. He's got a million, 1.1 million for the USDA loan proceeds, and then he's also expending 1.1 million, so that's a...
That should be a flow through.
The debts are washed there, washed.
That's the case, we need to be rethinking our sewer fees if we're operating out of savings.
All right, any, does any members of the public have any questions about the budget or any of the line items?
Not really knowing much about budgets, obviously, but I... Oh, yeah, Dennis Hawn. I sat in on the Element Engineering briefing, which was an eye-opener for our city. And I'm really curious, you know, when you look at the roads and the curves and the, and we'll throw in the sidewalks too, even though the, the citizens are responsible for that, but the city is graciously throwing in money to help alleviate some of the costs we may incur. But what I'm really curious about is that, that Element Engineering presentation was an eye-opener. And among, and if I remember right, 80 to 85% of the roads, sewers, sewer treatment plants are in disrepair. Am I, am I close on that? I don't know if you remember that, that presentation, but it was not a good picture of what we saw as far as the infrastructure is concerned in the city. In fact, I was going to ask if we, if, you know, I'll request a copy of that if I could. I don't know if you have that presentation that the two gentlemen gave. But are, are we really taking a look at, you know, focusing on some of that stuff? Because again, if our city, and I, and I mentioned this at the One-Cent Committee meeting, I was a, after it was over, I said, now I'm a citizen. And I said, all right, we, if our city falls apart, the roads, the sewers, the, the treatment plant, it sounds like we're going to be putting money into that. And we, and God bless America, we've got that new sky-high building, but we're pouring money into that. But are we disproportionately sending money other places where? Because if our city falls apart, it, it won't matter what we got on the outside of this city. We've got a $10 million building out here with, you know, a city that's literally falling apart. And that is what I, you know, basically, I, I'll tell you, I lived in Flint, Michigan. I'm from Michigan. I saw what happened up there. They let the infrastructure go. Literally let it go. And it destroyed the city. A lot of what, you know, a lot of us citizens, you can walk around and you can see the roads and the disrepair of the curves and the roads. Even my street, I live right on, right on Broadway. You know, if it, God, God bless America, we get rain here. But if it does rain hard enough, my front yard floods by six feet. I told this to Rob. I, I request that they clean that sewer at the corner of Broadway and Third, you know, more often than not, because if we get enough rain here, it literally backs up into my yard now because I have a low point from the corner of Broadway and Third to the corner of Broadway and Second. Mine is the low point, water backs right up into my yard. Again, basically, what I'm saying is, please look at our, our infrastructure. Because if it crumbles, nothing else is going to matter to this city. It, it won't. And the, the, but, the, the price that Element Engineering put on there was phenomenal, if I remember right. It was like over $100 million worth of repairs. But we cannot ignore that. We can't. We could build brand-new buildings on the outside. We could have a sky-high here and a sky-high mile away. But that downtown, and our city falls apart, it's not going to matter. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have any comments? All right, why don't we close the public hearing and turn it back over to the council?
You guys have any more questions? Okay. I would say that. Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
Nina, you've got the resolutions up.
I'll go ahead and that's on the agenda, I believe. I'll go ahead and do that now.
Um...
Oh, you're down for it.
It actually, it'd be the next thing. Yes, ma'am? I checked to make sure I didn't forget something.
Mr. Man...
This is Resolution 2021-19, amending the budget appropriations.
Oh, yeah, so we are on the resolutions. Resolution 2021-19, amending budget and appropriation of funds for calendar year 2021 to authorize expenditures and revenues for the General Fund and the Capital Project Fund.
I'm requesting the city that we can transfer funds that were budgeted to the General Fund, transfer those funds to the Capital Project Fund to reflect the revenue received and the expenditures dispersed for the purpose of the sky-high Capital Project. The budget of revenue and the capital outlay will be increased by 2 million, and the General Fund lease proceeds will be decreased to reflect the sky-high proportion of the lease proceeds. I'm, I'm asking the council for approval of Resolution 2021-19.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-19, approving and amended budget and appropriations of funds for the calendar year 2021 to authorize expenditures and revenues for the General Fund and the Capital Project Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2021-19. Is there any more discussion?
This looks like just journal entries. Is, am I correct on that?
Yes, it's just moving it from one fund to the other.
Thank you.
Nina?
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution 2021-19.
Okay, now we go to ordinances. First reading of Ordnance 911, adopting a budget and appropriation of sums. Appropriation sums of money for the City of Montavista, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January 1st, 2022 and ending December 31st, 2022.
Interim City Manager George Dingfelder has submitted a proposed budget to this governing body, and upon public notice, said proposed budget is open for public inspection, and said notice advises that the proposed budget would be taken into consideration at the regular meeting on the City Council of the City of Montavista, Colorado. And as previously discussed, the estimated revenues, estimated revenue is 8.7 million, and the estimated expenditures are 9 million. We put the budgets in your packet, and I would request approval on the first reading of the Ordnance Number 911.
Make a motion to approve Ordnance Number 911, annual appropriation ordinance, adopting a budget and appropriating sums of money from the City of Montavista for the calendar year beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022, with a total revenue of 8,758,708, and total expenditures of 9,014,324.
Second here. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordnance Number 911. Is there any more discussion?
I just hope to get some answers that we've asked for before we actually approve the complete budget. It would be my only discussion.
Nina?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine eleven on first reading for adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget.
Thank you. And just for your information, there is a copy of the proposed budget at the front desk for the public to view and take. So.
We'll have somebody from Gulfport before the.
And we'll have.
Excellent, thank you. Well, also, yeah.
Thank you, Anita. First reading of ordinance nine one two, and ordinance approving intergovernmental agreements with the Colorado Attorney General to implement Colorado opioid settlement.
Good evening, counsel. Before you is ordinance number nine twelve. It is in your packet. Along with it is several documentations that go with that. For the MOU, the memorandum of understanding and the intergovernmental agreement, which is proposed as well. Whereas the city of Montavista filed a complaint against various opioid manufacturers distributed in federal court on May of two thousand eighteen, which was consolidated into the nationwide multi-district legislation being heard by Judge Dan Polster in the northern, northern district of Ohio. And whereas the state of Colorado's seminary filed a lawsuit consolidated into the M D L. And whereas the M D L is proposed to be settled on a nationwide basis with numerous defendants contributing to a settlement fund proposed to be distributed to the states and then further distributed to, by them to the local jurisdictions within their boundaries. The amount of the settlement fund distributed to each state will be affected by how many local jurisdictions within the state and especially local jurisdictions participating in the M D L or other opioid legislation within that state. Participate in the settlement agreement and whereas the city of Montavista may choose to participate in the nationwide settlement through, excuse me, execution of a set intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Attorney General to administer settlement funds or may choose to continue to litigate on its own. This agreement concurrently proposed consists of the attached Colorado opioid settlement memorandum of understanding, the attached subdivision settlement participation form that releases the city's legal claims against Johnson and Johnson, the attached settlement participation forms that releases the city's legal claims against Amero, Amero Source, Bergen, Cardinal and McKesson, and the attached, and the Colorado subdivision escrow agreement that ensures the city's claims are only released within ninety-five presentation, presentation by certain local governments that have been reached, ensuring the maximum available share of the settlement funds to Colorado. Counsel recognizes the advantages to be gained from participating in the proposed settlement through the participation in the settlement and the execution of the four intergovernmental agreements referred to above, including one, the control of eighty percent of the funds locally, twenty percent by the city and Alamos, or excuse me, and Rio Grande County, jointly sixty percent by the sixty-six counties of the San Luis Valley as a region under the MOU. The ability of the region to make decisions locally on how to best address the opioid epidemic in the San Luis Valley. Three, the rapid availability for the funds now and over the next eighteen years as opposed to drawn out litigation, appeals and attempts at collection. Now for let it be ordained by the city of Montavista that as follows. One, approval of the intergovernmental agreement. Two, or sorry, the approval of the intergovernmental agreement for intergovernmental agreements referred above and attached to this ordinance and hereby adopted and approved. And that the city manager or the city interim manager is directed to execute the agreements on behalf of the city of Montavista. Two, the general repeal all other acts, orders, ordinances, resolutions, proportions thereof in conflict with the section adopted in this ordinance and hereby repeal to the extent of such conflict. Three, recording and authentication. This ordinance immediately upon its passage shall be authent, authenticate, well, I can't even talk today, sorry. Authenticated by signatures of the mayor and the city clerk, recorded in the city book of ordinance, kept for that purpose and published according to law. Publication and effective date, this ordinance shall take effect ten days after the publication following final passage. Publication before and after the final passage shall be in the entile of the ordinance which council determines continues a significant summary of the ordinance together with the statement that the full text and ordinance is available for public inspection and acquisition at the city clerk's website or at the city clerk's office. Five, non-codification. The city clerk is directed to ensure that the provisions of these ordinances are not codified to the code of ordinances of the city of Montavista. And six, declaration of public interest. This ordinance is necessary to preserve peace, health, safety, welfare and serve the best interests of the citizens of Montavista. This would be first reading. Second reading, if approved tonight, second reading would be on the eighteenth of November. And if you have questions, he's the man to ask.
Who is?
Chief.
Oh, wait a minute. So this is, this is the settlement agreement and Counselor Segala was appointed to that as part of this. And so what they're doing, we're doing is just joining along with the rest of the entities in the San Luis Valley. I think San Luis Valley, if I correct my memory, but what it's like, well.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six. Yeah, so, and I think the state is getting four hundred million. I think it's four hundred million a year, so. Split that out between all the entities, I think we're the twenty-six entities here. As long as we join and stuff, they're going to get like two hundred thousand of the conglomerate to decide exactly with, like Counselor Segala, how we're going to spend that money. It makes sense. I mean, I think if we split it out, we're not going to get very much. So it makes more sense to, to join forces and, and use this money wisely.
Well, I will move to approve ordinance number nine one two, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreements with the Colorado Attorney General to implement the Colorado opioid settlement on the first reading.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number nine one two. Is there any more discussion?
I have a, I have a question. It says that we're giving up the, basically we're giving up the rights to any settlements from Johnson and Johnson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, McKesson, on and on. Do we stand to win a lawsuit against these companies at all? So two hundred thousand is better? Okay.
I'll, I'll let our.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm not arguing this. I don't understand it.
Yeah, so the state Attorney General's office kind of brought all of this together and said, let us fight this as one unity instead of everyone trying to nitpick across the country. And so what this has done, and so that, let me back up. So the Attorney General then came in and created these regions. And the San Luis Valley was going to be in a region of Pueblo and Guerfino County. And then they kind of kicked their feet and said, no, when I said they. Different representatives across the municipalities and the counties said, no, we just, just want one, one region by ourselves. And so honestly, two hundred thousand dollars isn't going to do a lot. But for Montavista to try and go fight this by itself, we're like a, a freckle on an elephant.
Okay, okay, I, I get that. So the, these companies, if they've done something wrong, are still going to be litigated against by the state, we're just saying that we are not going to litigate against them.
Correct.
Okay.
They're letting the state do it all.
So they're not getting off scot-free. They're just, not all of us are ganging up.
Well, they're, they're paying.
I mean, we're suing Attorney Generals, you know, and a bunch of probably Attorney Generals throughout the country are suing these companies.
Right.
On class actions. And so when you, but at some point, it's either you continue to fight or you settle and there's money on the table and at some point, they decide to settle. So that's where we're doing it, we're settling. And, and so as a consequence, you release these companies and they always sign these agreements that say, we're not sure if we're at fault, but we're putting money on the table anyway, but we may not be at fault. So they never really admit to anything. But in the scheme of things, these class action lawsuits attempt to make somebody accountable by throwing money toward the states and then the states can do things like, you know, help folks that might need it, build hospitals, do things that, that might help alleviate the problem. So, but in the scheme of things, the Attorney General decides at some point and maybe there's a group of them decide whether they're going to settle. And we really don't have much clout to say. We join and piggyback on these deals, but we don't really have much say.
Okay.
They decide if they're going to settle and then if we don't like it, we can continue on our own. But obviously, the only reason they probably settle is because there's a group of people with money that force, that are forcing them to settle. The city of Montavista on her own, we couldn't do anything probably. So.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any more discussion? Anita.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twelve, an ordinance approving intergovernmental agreements with the Colorado Attorney General to implement the Colorado opioid settlement on first reading.
About time we got held, counsel.
Agreed.
Staff Proposals, Reports and Actions. City Manager.
It's going to be short.
You almost lasted your report, buddy.
Twenty-four days. I sent, I sent Gigi a text on Monday and said, we're down to twenty-nine.
Who do you expect your last report to be? You know, have music and dance, the whole thing.
Can we throw a confetti?
First off, first off, you don't want me dancing.
I didn't say that for you. It could just be your background. You wear the top hat.
Okay, I actually do have a fairly short report. Stephanie has, has started, but I sent you guys an email. She had a death in her family, so she's out. That's the only reason she's not here. She'll be back on Tuesday and we'll get her at the next council meeting. And she does have several meetings scheduled next week to, she's already meeting some of the key players and, and already working and setting up appointments and, and meeting with people. Between me and Gigi, we've already got her doing a lot of stuff. We're, we're keeping her pretty busy and stuff and she's pretty enthusiastic. But like I said, she had a death in the family, so she couldn't be here tonight. We had a great meeting, or I had a great meeting with Tom Monaco, who's, he's the new director of Upper Rio Grande Economic Development. Tom's a really good guy. Gigi can speak to it. I know he's met with her a couple of times already and stuff. So we are going to give him office space here so that he can work out of the city of Montavista. Which will be good because then we'll have a lot more direct access to him. And again, I know him and Gigi have had conversations on some of the expectations and stuff. And then at some point, he, we're going to, as soon as he gets settled and everything in here, Rob gets his office binged up here. We're going to, we'll have him come before council and do a presentation and then that way you guys can meet him and talk with him and stuff. So Tom's a great guy, a lot of experience. So it'll be exciting to have him actually available and working here out of the city. And then of course, he'll be available to the rest of the entities within the county as well, so it'll be good to have him here. Sky has a little behind schedule. As we know, so, so the COVID thing, you know, with the drywalling and stuff, that threw it back a couple of weeks. And then just like any construction project, I've never been a construction guy, thank goodness. But just when everything's on, on plan and like, yeah, we're going to be early, you know, that stuff comes up. And, and then with the supply chain and all that stuff, it just, just keeps itching back. However, I talked to Alcon today. Site work is being done. They should be done with the east side, the outside, the site work there, I think he said, hopefully. Not next week?
The following week before.
Yeah, yeah, the following week. So they should be done with that. It's coming along good. They were starting to finish up the ceiling tiles in the convention center side. I thought he told me today or tomorrow. Tomorrow they should be done with that. Anyway, it's still anticipated that this will be done before the end of the year. I talked to Kyle today and he was, his, his goal is, he's like, I don't want to go back after Christmas, so. But again, it's a construction project, right? I mean, it's weather and everything else can throw a wrinkle in it, so. But it's slowly getting there. It's getting there pretty close. Wish I had better news than that, but we're still there. But that also gives us a little more time to get Stephanie a little more up to speed and then once Gigi gets here, we'll be able to really get her up to speed and, and have a lot of things in place to. I know she's already talked with Crane Festival and, what's her first one? A conference. She, she talked with them, so we're on to that. Next is city employee appreciation lunch is on November sixteenth. We'd really love to have you guys there. Join us for lunch at eleven thirty. We're going to do things a little bit, a little bit different. We actually, like I said, created an awards program. We're going to recognize some of those employees who have really gone above and beyond what their normal duties were. We're going to, so we actually have some awards and presentations that we're going to do. So we would again, love to have you guys there on, on the sixteenth at eleven thirty, join us for lunch. Me and Rob will be cooking.
Is that, is going to be at the city show?
What's that? No, we're going to do it here.
Here.
Yeah, because we have the, we're doing our employee benefits meeting that day, so we'll have everybody here. But please, I mean, right across the street, come have lunch. We're having the chili cook-off, so a lot of the employees, yeah. Yeah, we're having the chili cook-off.
Do you guys want the afternoon, afternoon off? Come eat some chili.
Burgers, broths, desserts and stuff like that. But then there's the chili cook-off and, and there's going to be the first ever. We actually have a trophy for the first annual Montavista, city of Montavista chili cook-off. So there's been a lot of smack talking going on in that included. I plan on winning it, hopefully. But so, so again, please do in that. And then last, I sent you guys a memo, so I would ask that if you guys would consider that and I would ask for a motion to, to consider that for the city employee appreciation.
I would move to approve the ARPA funds hazard pay to the employees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those funds for city employees. Is there any more discussion?
We should probably read out what, what numbers we're talking about so it was, so aware of what we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Do you have the, the numbers as far as how much that fund is?
Yeah, I, I think the.
It was in the memo. I just like it to be in public records.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's about fifty-two thousand. It's right around fifty-two thousand. And as you saw in the memo, that's.
I did, I saw it in the memo.
I hope that was informational. But yes.
The purpose is to, with federal funds we're receiving, is to basically be appreciative to the city employees and continue to work through COVID and all the shutdowns and still be interacting with the public throughout the entire time.
That's correct. To recognize the dangers and hazards that they have and continue to be a part of.
Just trying to find it to get it all out there.
So right here it says, employees with two plus years of service with the city will be awarded fifteen hundred. One to two years of service with the city, twelve fifty, six months to a year, service with the city, seven fifty. a year, service with the city, seven fifty, unless in six months with this, service with the city is three hundred. I, I definitely appreciate what the city does. I work in a place where I'm also on the front lines, working with people through the whole pandemic, you know, so it's like, I wish they would do that for us. Know what I mean? So like, I see that and I appreciate what everybody does, you know, so I'm all for it.
Any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries, has read into record.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, guys.
Twenty-four days. So that's twenty-five.
Kids Connection.
Kids whipped you up today or what?
No, I sat down all day, so sitting there, my whole body was just like relaxed. Good evening. So Kids Connection currently, right now, has active attendance and active enrollment of seventy-eight kids. Not every day, but we have seventy-eight kids that have attended at least one day throughout the month, throughout the last month. I give you the most current month numbers. That's really all we have going on. We try to keep them outside as long as possible. We're going to soak up as much sun as possible before the real cold weather hits us. So we stay outside till four fifteen, four thirty, and then get, get them back to Kids Connection, get them snack and get homework going, just in time for our amazing middle schoolers to come in and wreak havoc all over the entire building. That, that group of kids is so much fun this year. We actually have a really good group of, I think have about thirteen middle schoolers and it's probably the most we've had in the last five years. Somehow we've convinced them that we're so cool, they need to come hang out with us after school. And it's their choice, not even parents' choices. Parents are signing them up, like, my kids want to come here after school. Perfect. So I've been working with, still continue to work with the school district and the PBIS team, which is the Positive Behavior and Intervention Support Team through Billings. They receive some BPEG funding through the state to, it's like bully prevention and education. It's a bully prevention and education brand is what BPEG stands for. But they want to keep Kids Connection in the community as involved in the school district, so we're all using common language with the kids. So I attend their monthly meetings, let them know how things are going at Kids Connection, what we're struggling with. Since we kind of bridge the gap between the school day and home, we communicate with the teachers a lot more often sometimes than the parents do, so then we're kind of the pass-through in the middle so that kids know that if they're struggling, that we're talking with teachers and we know it, they can't hide it from us and know they don't actually get out of class every day with no homework and I don't have to go through backpacks because they try to hide it from me. We are communicating with teachers and we do know, so we're trying our best to help them succeed in every avenue of life. Let's see, on Fridays, our Friday program's been pretty slow. We're only seeing about fifteen to twenty kids. I wanted to give that through October so I can kind of get caught up. We'll look at what November is going to look like, but we're hitting our holiday season where we kind of are closed a little bit more so staff have time to spend with their families. So our Fridays have been a little bit of a challenge trying to keep staff busy, but they have presented us the amazing challenge of having, sometimes having more staff than children on occasion, which is the weirdest thing ever. When you walk into a room and you have like two kids at seven-thirty and four staff members and you're like, what game are we going to play today, guys? So we're working on Fridays, trying to figure out how to boost those numbers and get more kids to us on Fridays. Let's see, last Thursday, we hosted our Lights On After School event and it was a bigger success than I anticipated. Usually when we have like a parents' night or anything, we don't get very much participation. The last time we hosted a parents' night was probably in like two thousand eighteen, maybe, and I had two parents show up. So we ended up with about seventy people throughout the, throughout the night. We were open from five-thirty to seven-thirty and encouraged parents to come dressed in costumes, hang out with their kids, play games with their kids, and do arts and crafts with us, get to know the staff. And we had Frito pies and nachos available. We did a can, or a caramel apple bar, and that was everyone's favorite. They were swarming that thing. I sent, I sent kids home last Thursday, so sugared up. We usually don't give them candy or anything because we have to deal with them for so long, but they were going home to parents and it was a homing weekend, so we decided to kick it off a little early and we fed them tons of sugar. It was a lot of fun. Parents still sent them back to us on Monday, so they weren't too upset. Actually, even the owners of China Garden sent us over a bunch of wontons and spring rolls like out of nowhere, so we just had a big like random selection of food. So our kids were putting together a card today to send over to them as a big thank you because that was really unexpected. That's really all I have. Upcoming, we have during Thanksgiving break, when the school district is out, Kids Connection is also closed so that staff have time to spend with family. During Christmas break, we are actually open six of the nine days that the school district is out of school. So we'll get a little bit of rest between now and the beginning of the year and then be back and ready to go beginning of the year. So, have any questions for me?
Just again, I appreciate you and your staff for what you guys do because it shows.
We enjoy it. We get to be big kids. I say this all the time, we get to be big kids all the time. Actually, I'll share a little story. My niece attends the program on occasion and so I'm the oldest of three sisters. And she asked her mom, she was like, of the sisters, who's the oldest and who's the youngest and who's the middle? So my sister explained, and this is the youngest. She's like, well, Auntie Nika is the oldest and Chelsea's the middle, and then she's like, I'm the youngest. She goes, hmm, that's weird. And she was like, how come the oldest looks the youngest and the youngest looks the oldest? And I was like, ha, 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 but thank you, I'm sorry. I was like, but honestly, it's because I'm the auntie and I don't have to be serious and I don't have to put on mom voice and be a mom. I can be just the big child that encourages her to get in trouble and drive her mother insane, so she probably thinks I'm still a teenager. And mom has to act like a mom, so she's not as cool. But I get to be that person every day at Kids Connection and so do my staff. They truly enjoy it and really enjoy being with our kids as much as we are.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nika.
Heidi won't be here, he's, he's the Lone Ranger, so he had a sporting event of some kinds.
Council Committee, City Commission, and Counsel reports. Victor?
I don't have anything today.
Sorry. Laura?
I've got two items, how odd is that? Regarding previous comments made in the open forum, open mic session, I would like to have the city council issue an opinion about the legality of the addendum of the Gudslow lease because that appears to be a sticking point on whether or not it violates Division Four, Section fourteen, subsection A. Because if it does, then we need to change our processes and I would like to encourage, I'd like to have Mr. Trejo issue an opinion on that, on the legality of the addendum. Secondly, the Community Supper Night, Tuesday, our monthly community supper night with Grace and Mercy Bible Fellowship, five to seven, over at First Christian Building. Everybody is welcome to come. It'll be homemade soup this Tuesday. Hope to see you there.
Jason?
I'd echo those sentiments. We need to follow up on that and see what we need to do to move forward with the Gudslow building. And that's all I have.
Martha?
Well, I didn't think I had anything, but in, in response to that, I also, I want to be sure that we are examining the letter of the law as well as the spirit of the law. Many of us would be condemned in many different areas of our lives if we followed simply the letter of the law. The spirit of the law is, I'm not going to say it's more important, I'm going to say it is also important. So I would ask that, Mr. Trejo, when you're making your opinion, that you take that into account. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, so the Christmas parade is on board. It will be Christmas in Candyland, so all the forms are out, I believe, to be window decorating, house decoration, and the parade lights. So giving plenty of notice. When is that competition judged?
Why'd you ask me? I don't know exactly. It's one or third and fourth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Coming for a repeat.
We had little Christmas elves deliver the poster to us today. I'll go look.
There were tall Christmas elves.
There's something else going on next week. Oh, Veterans Day. On the twelfth, all right, on the twelfth.
Parade and the celebration will be held on November twelfth, Friday, on twelfth, that start again at ten.
Parade starts at ten?
Yep. And then it will start over at Stars and Stripes, go up Adams, and then drop down to third, come across the highway, the batter sit back up to second, and then dispersed back. And then there, the memorial park will be where the celebration will be.
Come out and look because we've installed, the community funds installed new stones. So all the service stones have been installed this week, the school district, and along the fellow works, we're installing a digital marquee. So that'll be done before the parade.
Very good. And then the thirteenth, Saturday, the fire department's annual chili dinner. Be sure to attend. So outside of that, that is all we have. And we will recess this meeting till November eighteenth, six p.m., right here at Council Changers.